Good evening. I now call the Planning and Zoning Commission of meeting of September 12, 2022 to order. In lieu of, we'll skip the invocations since we don't have Chaplain here with us and go straight to the Pledge of Allegiance. The pledge this evening will be led by Commissioner Bree King.
Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number four on the agenda is roll call.
Chairperson Gercher.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Rincon.
Here.
Commissioner Laney.
Here.
Commissioner Griffiths.
Here.
Commissioner King.
Here.
Commissioner Rutherford.
Here.
Moving on to number five, is there a motion to approve the minutes from the July 11, 2022 regular session?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting come July 11, 2022.
Is there, moved in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to announcements.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, Commission. I'd like to introduce Mr. Zurich. Stephen Zurich is our Deputy Town Attorney. He will be joining all our meetings moving forward and also our Plan, our Plan, P&amp;Z meetings as well, from what I understand. I'd also like to introduce to you Ernest Ruby. He is our new Deputy Director, Principal Planner, and will be conducting these meetings in the future, as long as some of the council. So, thank you and welcome aboard.
And for the Commission, anytime if you have any questions for Stephen, please go through the chair and just say, "Mr. Chairman, I have a question for the attorney," and we can go from there. But that's, that can be done at any time. Go ahead and read my statement. "Good evening. My name is Matt Gercher, and I'm the Chairperson of Planning and Zoning Commission, and I'll be presiding over the Commission's deliberations on hearing items this evening. Planning and Zoning Commission sits in advisory capacity to the Town Council and reviews planning and zoning issues, and forwards recommendations regarding these important issues to the council. The Commission is bound by specific regulations and guidelines for considering applications, and there are also a surprising number of things the Commission cannot take into consideration when reviewing an application. Finally, members of the Commission are volunteers and not paid employees. This evening's proceedings will be conducted using the following format. First, I'll read the hearing application into the record. Once the application has been read into the record, staff will present the case and the recommendations to the Commission. Members of the Planning and Zoning Commission will then direct any questions they have regarding the application to staff. After the Commission completes its initial review of the application, the applicant will have an opportunity to comment regarding the matter and answer any questions. After the applicant has completed their comments, I'll open the floor to general comments, comments from the general, excuse me, from the public regarding the current application being discussed. And for this evening, we have three public hearing items and one action item. So, General Plan Amendment 22-003, zoning map change 22-007, and preliminary development plan 22-009 will be heard all at once. But the first thing we have on the agenda is zoning map change 22-006, a request by Fein Signature Group LLC, a request for zoning map change from M1 PAD Industrial General Limited Planned Area Development to P1 Parking on approximately 12-acre parcel located north of Valley Road at the terminus of Enterprise Parkway." Fernando?
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, and Commission. The subject property is for zoning map change, ZMC 22-6. It is for the Amazon Parking. The parcel is located on Valley Road, currently right across from the Amazon Distribution Center, right by west of Enterprise Parkway. The property is currently zoned M1 PAD. It's an industrial zoning district. The use is not allowed by matter of right. The request this evening is for the zoning map change to P1 Parking only. The parking will actually facilitate the use across from Amazon Parking Spaces so that their employees and vans could park at that location. It is complying with our general plan at this time. A neighborhood meeting was conducted for neighbors within 1,000 feet. It was reported that no one actually joined the meeting except for the applicant. They were the only ones present at the time. There will be a proposed 76 Parking Spaces. There also will be engineering. Site development standards will be in place as well. And here's a landscaping outline of the plan that's proposed for the property as well. And at this time, that's pretty much all I have. The applicant is here and be happy to answer any questions you have in regards to this project. So, staff is recommending the Commission consider approving this and moving it forward to council.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions to staff from the Commission? Commissioner Griffiths?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. On this site plan, I was just curious as to what triggered the fire hydrant install in a parking lot area.
Chair, Commissioner Griffiths, thank you for that question. CAFMA actually requires, there will be no utilities to this site at all, but CAFMA, in review of this project, required the fire hydrant to be placed there.
Is that a code requirement?
It would be under the CAFMA standards, yes. CAFMA, not the town code. It would be under the fire code.
I understand that. I'm just curious as to what that code is. I find it strange that we have a fire hydrant in a parking area, and I don't see through town a lot of other fire hydrants in parking areas. So, I would like to request that that information, i.e. what triggered the hydrant install, be in the council packet when it goes forward for their approval.
Not a problem. We can make that recommendation.
That would be great. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
Welcome.
If the applicant's aware of this as well, I'm sure they can answer it as well.
Yes, that is true.
Any other questions of staff? All right. Okay. This time, I'll invite the applicant up.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. I'm Jake Levin. I'm with Kim Lee Horn, and I'm the designer of this project.
Okay. If you want, you can raise that up just a little bit before you.
Thank you. Free to take any questions.
Okay. Commissioner Laney have a question?
One. Mr. Gonzalez said that there were going to be no utilities to the site. Reading about Amazon, they say that by the year 2030, they will have 100,000 delivery vans. Has this been taken into consideration with this site?
At the moment, the scope of this project specifically for this parking lot is limited to what is available based on parking standards. And so, 76 is what, or 70, I think 76 is what was said, for the number of parking spaces. And that will actually include the parking for delivery vehicles as well as the personal vehicles of their drivers.
Right. But are you going to have any charging stations?
That was not scoped at this time. I can coordinate with the client to discuss, but that was not mentioned in discussion.
Thank you.
I did have a quick question for you with regard to pedestrian safety. I don't really see it on the map unless you can point it out if there's going to be a crosswalk.
Yeah, if you look to the west of the existing driveway entrance on the bottom of the page, there's a-
It was hard to say, it was hard to tell if that was a crosswalk or a utility crossing there. My concern, and hear me out on this one because I have done a lot of work on Valley Road. In fact, I was the one who coordinated getting fiber to the place. So, I've done a lot of work on Valley Road. People drive on Valley Road like it's almost a speedway. And because you're going from almost that curve on Valley down to this, basically down this direction, I know there's going to be adequate signage, but I definitely think maybe a flashing pedestrian walkway to slow people down would be probably the best thing just because it is just so close to that curve and people do take, you know, those speeds on that road rather high. I don't know if that's something you would consider?
Yes. Yeah, that's something we consider. Are you referring to like a flashing pedestrian sign?
Basically, just like we have on Lakeshore right here in front of the building. If someone wants to cross Valley Road, they'd have to press that, then the lights would start flashing to slow traffic down. And I think that would be better off than just having a regular crosswalk with pedestrian things there just because of visibility. And of course, like I said, people take that road.
Yeah. That was in the, in the original scope, but we can definitely take that into consideration.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Griffiths?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Welcome, Mr. Levin. Thank you for being here. Question on the proposed site lighting. I'm assuming it's dark sky lighting?
Yes, correct. The lighting was designed per the town code, which is the dark lighting.
And is the parking lot-
With the shielded, shielded lumens.
Perfect. Is the parking lot gated?
No, it is not.
It's open?
Yes, correct.
And then I have one more question, Mr. Chairman, on the landscape plan, if you're okay with that. It was very difficult to read our plan. So, is what is being proposed low water use and/or zero escape planning?
I believe so. I know, I, the, there was another designer in our firm that designed the landscaping. I believe it was designed per town code, per, per the land development code. And I believe the intent is that it will be a low-pressure drip irrigation. I don't believe irrigation was designed at this stage, but it will be later on.
Well, it says that there is, you know what? I don't know if it does have irrigation, does it?
I don't believe at this stage, as part of the plans, it was, irrigation design was included yet. Usually, that's for, towards the final stages when we design.
So, I am concerned about water usage.
Water usage, okay.
I would like it to go on record and maybe as part of the approval package, that it is low-water use, zero escape plants.
Okay.
And with an irrigation timer or meter that is soil moisture, has a soil moisture sensor in it. If you don't mind working on that. And I, Mr. Chairman, I would like to maybe build that into our approval process, if the applicant is agreeable to that.
Yes.
Also, are you able to answer Commissioner Griffiths' question about the fire hydrant?
The fire hydrant, yes. So, as Mr. Gonzalez mentioned, it is a requirement by Central Arizona Fire and Medical. I believe it's based on the distance requirement from, since a fire truck, it has limited access to the site, they would need to access a fire hydrant. And I think for any new developments, fire, fire code is requiring that parking lots have fire hydrants as well.
So, again, tonight, that is not going to deter my support of this project, but I would like that information to be more defined when it goes to council.
Okay.
Thank you so much, Mr. Levin.
Are there any more questions of the applicant from the Commission?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just to reiterate, how do we get the landscaping and the soil moisture sensor irrigation into the approved document?
And we could add, add that as a stipulation, if I'm not mistaken, or ask the, if, you know, since the applicant was okay with that. I'll leave that up to Mr. Gonzalez.
I think, so it's a sensor for, for water.
We can, we can possibly make that as a condition of zoning at the time moving forward. Being that there was no proposed utilities, we're going to put the water hydrant, or the fire hydrant, and we may be able to tie into that for the water. So, yeah, I don't think that's going to be an issue.
Okay.
So, yeah, we can make that a condition of zoning.
And how do we see that condition, sir?
Well, you'll make a motion.
Okay.
Chair will make a motion.
And you would just add it, we can word it and go from there.
And then you'll go.
I'll leave that up to you, Commissioner.
Oh, I was going to leave it up to you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions of the applicant, of the Commission? All right, any, thank you, sir. Thank you. Any further questions of staff? All right, hearing none. We'll open the floor to public comment. Is there anyone wishing to comment on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Anything else you want to add, sir?
No, thank you.
All right. Bring it back to the Commission. Is there a motion to approve zoning map change 22-006 with the following conditions? A, which development shall be in accordance with the attached site plan Exhibit C and D, including required offsite improvements, in conformance with all town codes prior to issuance of construction permits. And B, Commissioner Griffiths?
Thank you, Chair. I make a motion to approve-
Well, we've already, well, your motion, you can, you can add the-
I would like to add additional stipulations.
Sure.
Installing an irrigation timer that has a moisture sensor to it for irrigation processes and making sure that we plant low-water usage plants and/or zero escape plantings for the purpose of water conservation.
And, and that would be in conjunction with our species list that we have under our town code. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, is there a motion for, to approve zoning map change 22-006 with the two stipulations?
I'll make the motion to approve ZMC 22-006 with the attached and unattached.
Oh, the, the, just the stipulations?
Stipulations.
Or, or conditions.
I'll be happy to second.
All right, it's moved in second. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Griffiths?
Yes.
Commissioner Laney?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rincon?
Yes.
Chairperson Gercher?
Yes. All right, moving on to-
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Might I request that future zoning maps and plots have legends that are legible?
I think that is a very good request, Commissioner Rutherford. I know you're not the first two actually have requested that.
We did attempt to do it on this first one, the fold-out. Is that sufficient? We will be moving forward and providing you those types, if that's okay.
Sure.
Is that agreeable? Thank you.
All right. So, moving on to public hearing item number two, three, and then action item number one. I'll only write them all into the record. So, first is General Plan Amendment 22-003, upon the application of Bill Watson, agent, a request for a minor general plan amendment from open space to community commercial on approximately three-acre parcel located on the west side of Viewpoint Drive, approximately 400 feet north of Pronghorn Ranch Parkway. Zoning map change 22-007, upon the application of Bill Watson, agent, a request for zoning map change from AG Agricultural to C3 PAD Commercial Minor Industrial Planned Area Development on approximately three-acre parcel located on the west side of Viewpoint Drive, approximately 400 feet north of Pronghorn Ranch Parkway. And preliminary development plan 22-009, upon the application of Bill Watson, agent, a request for preliminary development plan for self-storage facility on approximately three-acre parcel located on the west side of Viewpoint Drive, approximately 400 feet north of Pronghorn Ranch Parkway. Fernando, take it away, sir.
Thank you, Chair. Vice Chair, Commission, with your permission, we'll be presenting all three at the same time. They will be required to have separate votes on each one. The general plan amendment will be required as part of your approval tonight for this project because it is inconsistent with our general plan. In order to do so, for the proposed use, the general plan amendment 2203 will be required. Zoning map change from agricultural at this time to C3 will be required for the proposed use. The use of the storage, for Summit Storage here at Viewpoint Drive as located on the map, currently it's being utilized as part of the nursery that's at that location. There is the nursery, the zoning that's in place at this time. This is the parcel in question that we will be asking or requesting zoning map change. In 2008, ZMC 08-005 was approved for a use similar to this at that time. And it went from the C2, actually, to the C3. And this was actually the outline of the approval for that project. Unfortunately, at that time, it never went through for fruition. It reverted back to AG because it didn't go through. Today, we're asking, and the parcel that we're looking at there is the one that was approved previously, the one in red, ZNC 0805. That's the location. That actual area was all developed as C2. This was the approved plan at the time for Northgate Village Center. This is what we're looking at today as regards to the preliminary development plan for Summit Storage. This use is consistent, well, will be consistent if approved through the general plan. We have actually done a neighborhood meeting for this. There was folks that attended to that meeting. There was a couple of issues that came up. People were concerned about crime and for this type of use and some of the landscaping, things of that nature. There was a couple of other things in regards to traffic, the heights of the buildings. I believe that was it. And most of those were addressed at the meeting, but the applicant is here and can speak to that. There was also a traffic study done as well, and the applicant is here and can embellish in regards to that traffic study. So, at this time, there are a number of stipulations in regards to the zoning that I would like to have read into the record. And some of those is that the ingress egress of the utility easement needs to be 30 feet, not 25. This is information we got as part of the review that we did in regards to this. Plan shows a hydrant tied to the sewer main at the entrance. This needs to be fixed, tied to the water line, that they cannot place a detention basin within the right-of-way, the public right-of-way. It needs to be the product onsite or in the project. Offsite improvements at Viewpoint Drive and the roadway widening, curb, gutter, sidewalk, streetlights will be required for this project. Specifically, the landscaping and screening shall be included as part of the final development plan in conformance with our standards. And the only use permitted on this property, if voted on favorably, will be the storage, the self-storage operation. No other use within that C3 zoning will be allowed at this part. And it should be approved by a final development plan to the council. Those are the conditions that staff would request that be attached to that rezoning. At this time, staff would recommend the approval of all three if possible. And the applicant is here and would be happy to answer any questions you have. And I also would be happy to answer questions if you have any.
Thanks, Chair Rincon.
Fernando, the, the landscaping along the street there, when you mentioned in what you just read to us, it said that that landscaping plan had to be in conjunction with the town. Can you give us an indication of what the town requires along that length so that people driving through aren't necessarily going to be looking right at the, at the units?
We will actually be having a conversation with the developer at the time of permitting to see how we can buffer, or most efficiently buffer, that this project from Viewpoint Drive so that people aren't seeing those units from the drive. I know that there is already an addition, or a 15-foot buffer in the rear of the property with mature trees that will be, will be in place. And I'm sure the applicant will correct me if I'm wrong. But we will be requesting additional landscaping. And to Commissioner Griffiths, we will be asking that they are drought resistant as well as part of, the town has specific species that can be utilized as part of that.
So, so in our approval this evening, we're not going to be seeing that. That's just going to be what goes to the council.
I unfortunately don't have a landscaping plan with this today, but I, I will actually, as part of the conditions that I read, were a requirement for the landscaping buffer. And again, I will be talking to the applicant in order to figure out a way to most efficiently screen this area from public view, off of Viewpoint.
And so, you mentioned solid screening. We're talking possibly a wall or a vinyl fence or something along those lines?
Correct. It'll be a solid wall, correct, in conjunction with the landscaping.
Out of curiosity, Fernando, back in 2008, what were, if you have that information, I'd like to hear it, what were the, the votes? What, this was approved, was there any opposition, that type of thing?
At that time, there wasn't, there wasn't any. I actually read through the zoning map change at that time. There wasn't, there wasn't as much development in the back, so there was an opposition to that project at all. And that's why it moved forward. And it was in conjunction with that bigger picture, and I showed you. It was part of this Northgate Villa.
So, essentially, it was basically that entire parcel, so taking, so if my, if I'm seeing this correctly, because right now, we're looking at the eastern side of the current Prescott Valley Growers property. This would have been the entire, entire parcel back in the day.
That is correct, yes. And as you can see, that's, that's the photograph of that entire area that was approved. And today, we're just looking at half of that. We're just looking at that one portion.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Gonzalez, it looks to me from this drawing that it has a gate going across the front of it?
It is my understanding, yes, there will be a gated, it will be a gated area, secured.
And now, back to my fire hydrant question. I don't see any required fire hydrants here.
I believe that there is existing fire hydrants, so this developer won't be required. I didn't get any feedback from CAFMA saying that they would be requiring one for this project, but there will be, there should be one already on the site or near in that area. And I'm, I don't know if the applicant's here and knows where in the location it is, but I can assure you that there is probably one already. That's why it wasn't required.
Okay. So, if you could, please put that in the council package as well for clarity purposes. And then, our package said that there were participants at the public meeting, and it says both emails are attached. There were no emails attached to our package.
And I apologize for that.
So, I don't know if those were in opposition or support.
Do we know? No, I, unfortunately, I didn't, I didn't see this. The applicant is here. He may, so the applicant's shaking his way, you know, saying, yes, he's got information in regards to that. So, he would be able to answer that question for you.
And then, one more question. In the stipulations under number four, none of that mentions any sort of turn lane coming off of Viewpoint Drive into the facility.
And they, they'll be happy to talk to you about that traffic analysis, and that may speak to that.
Okey-dokey.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of staff? All right, thank you. This time, I'll invite the applicant up. You, you, if you want, you both can come up if you'd like. Welcome. Please go ahead and state your names for the record.
I'm Justin Scott. I'm the owner of Summit.
Bill Watson, agent.
Okay.
Thank you. Nice to see you, Mr. Scott.
Let me see if they, let me go ahead and ask them if you have anything to add or reiterate from staff's presentation.
The site does have a fire hydrant. And I think at this time, based on the current Prescott Valley Growers that occupies the site, the traffic from that will, our use will be greatly diminished. will be greatly diminishing the amount of traffic that's currently utilizing that area. They will, however, have an easement through the property to the back half of the property and still continue their business. Our water use will certainly diminish watering thousands of plants. We will certainly adhere to the low water guidelines within the town of Prescott Valley and the sensor so that we make sure that we're utilizing the least amount of water possible. So, from a screening perspective, we were thinking about using a split face block and potentially trying to do something that's aesthetically pleasing, and then in front of that, utilize the, utilize the plannings in addition. So, we'd like to have the block wall be taller than the units themselves and then buffer that to the, to the street curb with the plannings.
Question, the current, what I'm going to call gravel road that goes on the south side back to, goes past this, is that going to continue to be the access to this property?
Yes, we'll improve that, and that access will be for our utilization, to our gated access, and then Prescott, the Prescott Valley growers will remain with an easement across our property to access theirs. We asked to purchase the additional property in the back, but they're just not ready at this time to allow us to do that.
Can you give us an idea of what improvements you're going to do to that road?
Asphalt, per the codes here in the town.
Mr. Griffiths?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Scott, Mr. Watson, how tall are the units?
Nine feet?
Yes.
Nine feet.
Okay, so the wall then would probably be 10?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there going to be any onsite office, or is this all by key code coming in and going out?
We're, we have five locations in Prescott, and so this will be our second site that we've built, where it'll be touchless, meaning there will be no manager onsite. Everything will be online, and you'll get your codes. We have management that goes through the sites, and then our hours of operation will be basically adhere more to daylight, so we'll shut down in the evenings and open up in the morning.
This is badly needed, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant? Seeing none, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
If there's any comments during public hearing, you're allowed to come back up, and we'll invite you back up. At this point in time, I'll open the floor to public comments. If there's anyone wishing to comment, please go ahead and step forward. Go ahead and say your name for the record.
This is going to be one parcel, correct?
Well, it looks like it's one parcel that's currently split, if that is.
But it's going to be one big piece, right?
Well, it's split. It's basically a parcel that is currently going to be split.
With the road.
Yes.
Okay. Now, did anybody account for maybe the widening of Viewpoint later on? Is this setback enough? I wasn't at the other meeting, that's why I'm asking.
We can have the applicant address.
Okay, good, thank you.
They need to address the traffic stuff on that, but do you have anything else to add, sir?
No, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Your name, sir?
Yes, go ahead and state your name. State your full name for the record.
Oh, Joe Hoytis.
Joe, thank you.
Viewpoint.
All right, go ahead, come back up. Go ahead and just give us a general idea of what you're going to be doing for Viewpoint.
Okay, so, the road itself will require us to adhere to curb, gutter, sidewalk. The setbacks within our project allow for future widening of that Viewpoint Drive into the future, so it did eat up a considerable amount of the land, but that's what was required by the town of Prescott Valley.
And if I'm not mistaken, Fernando, I think you can probably, you know, address this, that section of Viewpoint is actually slated to be widened here short, in the near future, correct?
That is correct. It is slated to be widened here in the near future.
And that's due to the development of Point of View and Antelope Park B, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Right adjacent to it.
Any other questions for the applicant or staff? And let me ask if there's any other comments from the public?
Mr. Chairman, I have some questions.
Go for it.
I have some questions for you, gentlemen. Thank you so much for coming. Could I please get clarity with respect to, you said there's touchless entrance and exits, and the shutdown in open times will be with respect to daylight? Does that mean that customers of the facility will not be able to enter the facility in the evening, or just that only your staff is going to be there during the daylight hours?
Thank you for the question. There'll be no access to the site when we shut down. It'll be in the night sky ordinance that you have, the lighting will be adjusted accordingly. Yeah, we just, we don't allow there to be, there will be cameras within the site. We just don't allow access. It just is really, in our operations, better, we think, overall for the site, not to have access after hours.
Excellent, I agree with that. That would be preferred. And then, with respect to, it says that you have a waiting list. How many people are currently on this waiting list, do you know?
Well, we just finished a study in Prescott Valley, Chena Valley, and Prescott, and there's not a unit available. If there is, the only reason there would be a unit available in the tri-city area is because somebody was moving out that morning and they needed to sweep it out. So, there is just such a demand right now. Isn't that there isn't three or four of us planning these type of projects? But even with the addition of thousands of mini storages, it still wouldn't meet the need at this time.
Okay, excellent. And then, moving back to the issue of crimes, so, the lighting, I understand that per stipulation four, there will need to be a street light. You mentioned that there will be cameras in the facility. Is there any other lighting in the facility during the evening times?
Well, our proposal would be that during our operation hours, once it hits dark, that we would try to minimize the lighting to the greatest degree possible, so turn off the majority of our lighting and potentially maybe even make it so that it might be turned on by movement.
Okay. That would be great, some movement sensors, lighting, just to help with the crime, that would be fantastic. I had one other question here.
Our signage hasn't really been planned, but it's going to be so obvious what it is, and because 99% of people now pick their mini storage online quickly and do everything online, signage won't be an issue either because the signage will be whatever the minimal amount is necessary or allowed.
Okay, and then the entrance to get into it, will that be a gate? How does that work?
Yes, that will be a gate that will all be part of the touchless system, so you'll be issued a gate code. The nice thing is, we can let you in and out, and also, if you don't pay your rent, we can, we can keep you out.
Okay, so tell me about the gate with respect to the security of the gate, though.
Okay, so the gate, the gate will automatically be closed at all times, it'll never be open. It'll only be open for a set period of time based on a sensor when trucks or individuals come and go to utilize it. So, it'll always be a locked, locked access at all times, 24/7.
Do you know the height of the gate?
I do not. I'm assuming that the gate would be at least nine feet tall.
Okay. And this, just to clarify the record for us, do you have any insight as to what those two emails were from the constituents that responded?
At the neighborhood meeting, we had two couples and two individuals that attended the meeting, out of 123 letters that were sent out. The emails that I got from different people, I included in the package. Somehow, they probably were misplaced, and I can replace those and make sure that Fernando has those emails. There is a party that lives directly behind the project that is totally in favor, that was one of the emails, totally in favor of the project.
Do you know what the alternative email was regarding?
Pardon me?
There were two emails, right? So, do, can you let us know what the second email related to?
I know one was the, was the guy that approved it, was probably somebody that didn't approve of it, but they didn't live, you know, directly near it. They were quite a ways from it.
Great, okay. Thank you very much for that.
My apologies, Commissioner, Chair. One of the, the emails actually weren't included, but they were in writing here, and you can see both. One of them shows that one of the emails was the one that was in approval of the project, and the other one was the one that actually spoke to the crime and spoke to the, the other things that were actually listed in the body of the brief.
Are there any other questions of staff or the applicant from the commission? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission, and we'll start with general plan 22-003. Is there a motion to support general plan amendment 22-003 from open space to community commercial?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to support GPA 22-003 from open space to community commercial.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Griffiths?
Yes.
Commissioner Laney?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rincon?
Yes.
Chairperson Zercher?
Yes. Second is zoning map change 22-007. Is there a motion to approve that with the limitations and conditions that have already been read into the record?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion on ZMC 22-007 to change from agricultural to C3 PAD with the conditions included.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Griffiths?
Yes.
Commissioner Laney?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rincon?
Yes.
Chairperson Zercher?
Yes. And finally, is there a motion to approve preliminary development plan 22-009 with the condition about, that has been already read into the record?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve PDP 22-009 with the conditions that have already been read into the record.
Is there a second?
Second.
We'll go with Commissioner Rutherford on that one. I think she was a little, a little faster than Commissioner Laney. It's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Griffiths?
Yes.
Commissioner Laney?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rincon?
Yes.
Chairperson Zercher?
Yes. I'm number one. On the agenda is called a public consideration and discussion of comments from the public. Those wishing to address the planning and zoning commission need not request permission in advance. Action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date. Anyone wishing to address the commission? Seeing none, we'll close call to the public and go to adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move me, we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we stand adjourned, thank you.